Good evening. Welcome to the Yukon City Council and Yukon Municipal Authority Meeting. This is January fourteenth, 2025 at approximately 7:00 PM. We're gathered here in council chambers in the Centennial Building at 12 South Fifth Street in Yukon, Oklahoma. This evening, we'll have an invocation given by Pastor Woody Burpo of Family Church, followed by a flag salute. Please rise if you're able.
Let's pray. Lord, thank you for today. God, thank you for such an amazing city that we get to live in. God, thank you for this city council that is leading us and guiding us. God, pray that you would give them your wisdom in all the decisions that they make. God, we do pray for all the businesses that are here in Yukon. Pray, God, that they would overcome the challenges that they're facing, God, that they would be prosperous, God. Pray, Lord Jesus, for all the citizens, Lord, that are here, God, in our city. God, I just pray that you would do great things in their life. And God, everything that's on the docket today, God, I pray that everything would be handled cordially and nicely. And God, that we would give you all the praise after tonight. In Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Clerk, could you please call the roll?
Pillmore.
Here.
Wooten.
Here.
Selby.
Here.
Shriver.
Here.
Zimmerman.
Here.
At this time, we will skip this evening's presentation and proclamation, defer it until the first meeting in February, given the OML's availability at that point. And we will begin by opening up our visitors' section. This time, we'll have our visitors' section of the agenda. Anyone having an item of business to present to the city council that does not appear on the agenda, please come to the podium at this time. Please state your name and address. You're requested to limit your presentation to three minutes. Any item being presented must pertain to the city of Yukon business. And I'll note that if there's an item you'd like to discuss that is appearing later on in the agenda, you'll have a time to speak actually more freely and we can interact. But anybody having an item for the visitors' section of the agenda that does not appear later on in the agenda, please approach the podium. Has anyone signed up to vote, Mr. Clerk? Or has anybody signed up to speak, Mr. Clerk?
I have no request, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Seeing no items for the visitors' section of the agenda, we will now recess as Yukon City Council and reconvene as Yukon Municipal Authority. We'll take up the Yukon Municipal Authority Consent Docket. The city manager recommends a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of December seventeenth, 2024. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Wooten.
Yes.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
Shriver.
Yes.
Selby.
Yes.
Pillmore.
Yes. At this time, we'll recess as Yukon Municipal Authority, reconvene as Yukon City Council. Similarly, we'll take up the Yukon City Council Consent Docket. Similar, this item is placed on the agenda so that the city council, by unanimous consent, can designate those routine items they wish to approve by one motion. If any item does not meet with the approval of all council members, that item will be heard in regular order. The city manager recommends a motion that will approve the minutes of the regular meeting of December seventeenth, 2024, payment of material claims in the amount of $1,268,165.14, changing the 2025 International Dump Truck approved, 12/19/2023, carried over to the fiscal year '25 capital budget to a 2026 Western Star Dump Truck with identical accessories and pricing to be purchased from Industrial Truck and Equipment, Inc., using state contract SW0106 and SW0500 in the amount of $268,038.14, designating the items on the attached list from the Technology Department as surplus and authorizing their sale, trade, donation, or disposal, a permanent easement from Development 23 LLC to allow for the right of ingress and egress for the sole purpose of construction of Health Center Parkway Drainage Improvements as recommended by the Assistant City Manager, a temporary easement from Development 23 LLC to allow for the right of ingress and egress for the sole purpose of construction of the Health Center Parkway Drainage Improvements as recommended by the Assistant City Manager. Lastly, the purchase of a 2024 Chevy Tahoe to replace a total 2024 Chevy Tahoe using insurance reimbursement funds. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Selby.
Yes.
Pillmore.
Yes.
Wooten.
Yes.
Shriver.
Yes.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
At this time, we'll have reports of boards, commissions, and city officials. This item's reserved for, I'm sorry, this item is, that's a typo. Report from the city engineer on analysis and update of quantities and materials and items in the On Call Concrete and Asphalt Paving Storm Sewer Project. Thank you, Robbie.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and council members. So we went back and just to go back, we have two contracts on the agenda to advertise. One is On Call for paving and drainage, stormwater, and the other one is for water and sewer. And the purpose of these contracts is to establish unit prices for different items of work. And each contract has a little over 100 items. This provides the city flexibility in making repairs. If the council so chooses, smaller projects, we can use this contract to do those. The larger contracts, we typically bid those. So the Public Works Director and I, we did get together and on the On Call paving and storm, we did go through and we deleted some items that we had not used in the past. To give you an example, about 2008, the city concrete milled, did a three-inch overlay of concrete on Cornwell between Vandement and Tenth Street, which has held up real well. Well, the thought was after that that we may go into residential neighborhoods and do that. So we had that, those items to complete that work. Well, in the last 15 years, we have never, we have never done that. We just do full replacements. So we deleted those. The one thing we did do, since we're doing a lot of concrete patching, we have actually, we now actually have an item for that particular type of work. And we did put a pretty good quantity so that when we have our pre-bid, we can talk to the contractors about that. And we did increase the sidewalk quantity because we've been doing that. So we did go through and look at everything. On the water and sewer repairs, we basically kept it the same. We're trying to cover every size of water line pipe and sewer line pipe we have. Our water lines range from six-inch in diameter all the way up to 24-inch with our well field. And our sanitary sewer goes from eight-inch all the way up to 36 inches we entered the plant. So we took a look at that and, as I mentioned, we'll have a mandatory pre-bid conference with contractors. We'll get further input from them. And if we need to maybe break out the quantities, like zero to 10 square yards and 10 to 50 to make it better, we'll consider that. So, and I would like to go through the bidding process again. So what we do is, once the council gives us permission to advertise, we advertise in the journal record two times. And the city also puts everything on the website. So after we advertise two times, we have a mandatory pre-bid meeting with the contractors. And we take questions and answers after that meeting for about five or six days. And then we will issue an addendum addressing items that we need to do. And we issue those to the contractor. And then about a week later, we receive bids. And then, once we receive bids, we bring that to the council with the recommendation. So with that, I'll be glad to answer any more questions.
The items that still remain on the contract bid specification, there are several that you've dropped to only one, quantity of one. Do you have any concern that a bidder could price those fairly high? They wouldn't drop through into the total price in a significant, with a significant impact? But if and when we needed to use it, we would really pay through the nose on those items?
Well, to give you an example, item 57, four-foot diameter manhole, we do have just one of those. And we're estimating that's a cost of $4,000. Typically, when you have a lower quantity, the contractor will, if you only have one, he may, he may bid it less. But the contractors understand what the purpose of this contract is. And in the contract documents, if I feel like somebody is unbalancing the bid, not bidding all these items correctly, then I can make a recommendation to the council to not accept their bid.
Very good.
So like, to give you an example, a 24-inch gate valve costs about $30,000. Well, if they come in and they bid that $5, that's unbalanced. That's not fair to everybody else. So contract documents allow me to review that, bring that to the council, and let you make a decision.
Very good. Other questions on these quantity updates and general review of these two contracts to be bid? I don't have them. Any comment from the public on these items? Thank you, Robbie.
All right. The next one, one, two.
Okay, yeah, you got the next one, wastewater treatment. Yeah, go ahead.
This one's good, we'll go quick. Next week, Wednesday, it got changed for everybody. Next Wednesday at 11:00 AM, we have our pre-work meeting with the contractor. I've been talking to him. He was waiting on a couple of other material suppliers to give him the time when he would receive certain materials. And he will be providing us a schedule on when he will receive materials and provide us a schedule for work. Probably the longest lead item we're going to have is the electrical improvements we're going to make for the existing blower building that will accommodate the future 300 horsepower blowers. So maybe next month at one of the meetings, I'll, maybe the second meeting, I can come back, I'll have the schedule, and we can go through that.
Great. Thank you.
Thanks, Robby. Thank you.
Update on banking services project and migration to primary bank, be okay? Doug.
As you know, Mr. Mayor, the council passed a resolution that authorized city staff to proceed with this project on 11/19 of '24. Right after that, we moved 14 of our CDs from our original bank to one of the banks that were named in the resolution. We received good terms on that, I think. We staggered the length of the CDs. We got varying rates. And as with all of our CDs, we're capitalizing the interest back into the CD so as to maximize the rate of return. Then in mid-December, we moved seven more CDs that matured to a second institution. Right now, we have two CDs that remain at our previous institution, and they mature next month. And when they mature, we will move those as well. Our third institution, we met with a series of times to work out the details for our demand deposit accounts. We opened those accounts on 12/17. We wired some test money that day, and then a week later, we wired a very, probably 95% of the rest of our funds over there. And at that point, we then transferred those funds into ICS accounts, which earn interest while maintaining the liquidity. And that's where most of that sits right now. But as of this week, we received some supplies, we've had some training, and probably at the end of this week, we will start transitioning our daily deposits and our daily banking operations at the end of the week here. Once that happens, then we can start closing some of the old accounts at the previous institution. There are a couple of accounts that we're going to have to keep open probably for several months because there could be outstanding checks on those accounts that, there needs to be funds in there. So if somebody presents a check, we can cash it. I passed out a written report to you guys that is a confidential report because it has interest rates and some other things that the institutions have asked us to keep confidential. Feel free to review those, but if you could pass those back at the end of the meeting, that'd be great.
Sounds like you guys are making good progress and aggressively moving, you know, the project timeframe. So it's good.
Doug, can you speak a little bit to the enhancements with our new daily depository bank, some of the things, the technology that, that we're improving?
Our previous procedure was pretty manual. You know, we have money that comes in from all departments, and it flows to the utility billing counter. And the two girls up there run a drawer and do a deposit at the end of the day. It goes in the safe, and then the next day, we get it out of the safe and work up the deposit, make sure it matches to our accounting system, and write a deposit slip and take it to the bank. So the biggest change now is going to be with checks that come in. And of course, the bulk of those are going to be people's water payments. But we now have a scanner, and we're able to put a batch of checks in the scanner, and they shoot through there, they make a nice 180-degree turn and come back out the other end. And once that happens, those are considered deposited into our depository bank. We will still have to count up the cash and the coin. What we will do now is take that to the branch of the bank here in town. They don't even fool with it. They set it aside. When the armored car comes by for them, they hand it off, and it goes to a facility that that bank has. I think they told me over by Mathis Brothers, if anybody's interested in checking that place out. Because all they do is count cash and coin, so.
You may, you may gather some attention if you go and check it out too.
Yeah, I wouldn't drive by more than once. But that's, that's, that's.
Unmarked warehouse buildings that tend to have good, good cameras.
Just follow the armored car, right?
Yeah.
Anyway, that's new for us, and, but we think it's going to work real well. And on down the road, maybe we can migrate to what they call a Dropbox type of collection for the people that want to mail in their payments, where that payment, if they mail a check, it then goes directly to the bank's post office box. And they open it and they process it instead of, instead of us doing that as kind of an intermediary step. And we'll see, we'll see how this other goes first and think about that a little bit later on.
So what do you do with all the scan checks, then?
Well, we keep them for a month. And there are bank rules that were explained to me a couple of times in very long-winded explanations that I am unable to really repeat much of to you, but I, they said you need to keep them for a month. Just put them in an accordion folder. And when the month rolls over and you get the next month's first of the month's day, then you take the old ones out, you can shred them at that point, and you can place the new ones in. And we image the checks on our own anyway, just in case there's ever any questions. So now, that won't count for the bank if something happens, but, but it could help us.
Thanks.
Any other questions on this project? Thank you, Doug.
Yes, sir.
Deputy Chief Brown, the report on Dover Mansion.
While he's making his way up, we have people that are standing outside. We do have some available seats up front if y'all'd like to come in. I know you want to sit on the front row.
Is he able to cut that?
Yeah.
Okay, awesome. Thank you.
Good evening. Basically, I'm here again to talk about the traffic report summary. I emailed a copy to each of you this morning. As you can see on the screen, this is just an overlay of the area that's in question about the traffic issues. It's a neighborhood north of Route 66, and it is, the new street is labeled up on the screen as River Mesa Drive. It actually turns into Dover Mansion. When you actually go out there, it, the section that is populated where it says River Mesa Drive on Google Maps is actually signed as Dover Mansion. You can see three way stop sign intersection, which was placed in there based on recommendation over the summer of 2024. And to the right of that, which is to the east, is also a four-way stop sign intersection that was placed there. The original four-way stop sign intersection at Smoking Oats in Dover Mansion as it existed for some time in that neighborhood. The blue triangle at Sideways is where we placed our speed trailer for a five-day period a week and a half ago to gather our data. Next slide, please. So a summary of the data that we gathered. We took, I took a comparison from March 5th of 2024 to March 12th of 2024. And then we conducted this year's data from January 3rd of 2025 to January 8th of 2025. Percentage of vehicles traveling over the speed limit of 25 miles per hour decreased from 10.75% to 5.43%. Average violation speed increased from 28.04 miles per hour to 28.89 miles per hour. So less than half of a mile per hour increased on the violations. Average speed increased from 19.55 miles per hour to 19.88 miles per hour. But the overall percentage of the speed limit compliance improved significantly. And this can be attributed to placing those stop signs at those intersections for Dover Mansion. In the report, the traffic summary, there are some listings of rumble strips, speed signs, and some different speed control devices, speed bumps and humps. I just deferred, because there's so much data out there that is either for it or against it, I just defer that back to either you or the Traffic Commission to evaluate. Any type of device outside of the stop signs that we've already placed will probably help improve. But I also believe that this, based on the stop signs that we've already placed in there, we've already seen a significant, you know, decrease in speeders.
You had approximately, was it approximately 2% of drivers that were excessively speeding? Trying to remember the report that I was reading this morning.
So on excessive speed, we calculated that as 30 miles per hour or over. And yes, less than, so originally, we had 1.95% in March of 2024. Now we're exceeding the 30 mile per hour speed limit or speed. And then last week, we had 1.58% that were exceeding the 30 mile per hour.
So give or, give or take around one out of every 50 to one out of every 75 people are excessively speeding?
Correct.
Okay.
Depending on your questions, that's all I have.
Go ahead, Ronnie. Could you approach the podium, state your name and address?
Yes, Ronnie Short, 970 Dover Mansion. So the information he's referring to before, I've got the photos. Those numbers aren't correct. And he says five days, and he disclosed the two days that were icy streets, that nobody even driving on the street in the weekend.
I'm not sure that those were the days that it was posted. Deputy Chief Brown, could you clarify the days that we had the speed trailer set up?
Yes, sir. It was January 3rd through January 8th.
January 3rd through the 8th. The snow was on last Thursday.
I got photos showing where the trailer was last time.
The ninth was the snow.
And how far away it was from where.
A year, a year from a year ago, Ronnie? Okay. So it, I mean, aside from the comparison, and we should make sure that Mr. Short gets a copy of that report.
And these photos were originally given to Corn and the city manager.
I, and we've talked about that before, right, Mr. Short, about?
Well, they never brought up any of the photos and why none, why he got two people deciding who gets to see these photos. She asked me where I lived, and I could have showed her if you had these photos that I gave to the city manager.
Yeah, I think that's fair. I mean, you've described where you live in the last meeting and in this meeting. So I think.
I think where you're losing my point is how far the trailer was and how much downhill our, our street goes. And he claimed that it was reading his cruiser and not picking up any of the short cars. It wasn't.
From, are we talking about the most recent deployment, or are we talking about a year ago?
No, a year ago.
Okay. I understand what you're saying and the comparison. So the comparison could be a little bit skewed, given what you've said. But, but nonetheless, I think the current reading, and I'd like to get you a copy of the report, and we're happy to discuss it further. Because I do think that the current data, forget the comparison.
We watched the, we watched the trailer. We watched the speed. So when you say they read going past the trailer, didn't you say that also?
Yes, sir.
So it only reads coming to the trailer?
No, it reads away and going to, but not behind it.
That's what I just asked.
But not behind it.
Right.
We'll get you a copy of the report, Mr. Short, as well, as well as some of your concerned neighbors. It's not an issue that we're overlooking, and we want to study it further. Thank you, Deputy Chief Brown. Are there any other questions on this particular matter?
No, I thought, I thought it's sitting there. I mean, I drive it almost every day, and it was, it was sure accurate. That I can say, I kind of, I'm probably some of that percent testing it. So there's that. I mean, it was, it was accurate.
Appreciate you.
Appreciate you.
Just data, he was getting data. Thank you for your service. All right. If there aren't any other further questions, we'll conclude the reports of boards, commissions, and city officials. At this time, we'll have a report from North American Forensic Accounting's Forensic Review Report by Michael Breyon, partner of North American Forensic Accounting. Good evening, Michael.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, city council, and citizens of Yukon. So North American Forensic Accounting has concluded its work related to the city of Yukon's forensic review. So tonight, what I'd like to do is, I'd like to walk through the report and provide an overview of our observations and findings. Also, at the end, if time permits, take any questions the council might have, et cetera. So before I get into our actual findings, what I'd like to do is, I'd like to talk a little bit about the difference between a forensic audit and your financial statement audit. And I'd also like to talk about what procedures or what's our approach whenever we perform a forensic audit? Because a lot of people simply are confused or have been confused historically, and this is very common, as to what the difference is and what we're here to do. So first, whenever we talk about a financial statement audit, and you have that every year, and your financial statement auditor comes in and presents, okay? What they do is, they are expressing an opinion on whether your financial statements are presented in all material respects in accordance with a financial reporting framework, generally accepted accounting principles, GAAP. Basically, are the numbers accurate? Are they presented appropriately in the right prescribed format? They provide this opinion in what's referred to as an auditor's report. And if you haven't read it, it's actually very interesting because it spells out what they do and what they don't do. And that's usually page one of your financial statement. So I encourage everybody to read that because what we encounter a lot is what academia, what the news calls the expectation gap. So whenever you speak with folks about what they expect from a financial statement audit, a lot of times, they talk about ensuring that internal controls are in place, functioning properly, that there's, that they're testing for fraud, and that no fraud is taking place, that there's compliance with policies and law, et cetera. Well, that's not the case. A financial statement audit does not require you to test that. It requires you to get an understanding of internal controls and governance, which we'll talk about tonight, an understanding so an auditor can tailor their audit procedures accordingly. They don't have to rely on internal controls or governance. They can structure their audit in a manner that they rely 100% on what's referred to as substantia testing. Basically. Basically, they look at the account balances and look at underlying details. So that's a big difference right there. Whenever I talk about forensic accounting, a forensic review, what we do is we evaluate specific concerns. So in doing so, we also take a look at internal controls, compliance with laws and policies. And we look for malfeasance. Whether it's fraud, whether it's inappropriate conduct, whatever. So there are a lot of other differences between a financial statement audit and a forensic audit, but I think that's the primary differences that I wanted to hit on here tonight. So next, I'd like to talk about what we do whenever we do a forensic review. So the first thing we take a look at is what we refer to as governance. So what is governance? Well, it's policies, procedures, practices used to control an organization. And it's also the tone of the organization. How does management lead? Leadership is very important. You might have heard the old adage monkey see, monkey do, right? We apply that similarly to our reviews and our assessment of leadership, how that permeates through an organization. That tone. We also take a look at communication. Communication from the top down and the bottom up. That also includes the communication between senior management of an organization and, in this case, city council. Again, that all comes to play in governance. So think about it as overarching policies. Think of it from a standpoint of do they have a code of conduct? Do they have a code of ethics, conflict of interest statement, anti-retaliation policies, things like that? How does an entity expect its employees to behave? All right, so that's governance. Whenever we take a look at governance, the first thing we do is ask for these policies. But we also obtain a lot of knowledge and understanding through interviews. And during our three-plus weeks on site, we did a lot of interviews of both current and former city employees as well as council members. So we spent a lot of time assessing governance, that tone of the organization. Next, we looked at internal controls. And internal controls are systems and processes that provide reasonable assurance that the city's goals and objectives are going to be obtained. And what I mean by that, if we drill down, is the effectiveness of operation, reliability of financial reporting. Are the numbers that you're giving to the auditors and that they're putting out there as part of your financial statements, right? The audit financial, are they accurate? Also, we take a look at compliance with laws. Do internal controls basically keep the organization in lockstep? So we evaluate internal controls not only to figure out if they're effective, whether you're in compliance with laws and whatnot, but we also identify gaps. We're looking for gaps in internal controls because whenever you are searching for malfeasance, fraud, for example, people have a tendency of taking advantage of control gaps. It's called opportunity. So we get an understanding of where the gaps are in order to find where the opportunity may exist. And then we drill down to see if anything comes to light. All right? So we assess risk. That's a big piece of what we do whenever we're evaluating governance and internal controls. And whenever I talk about risk, risk is what could go wrong. And whenever we look at a city, a business, we find out where the risk resides. For example, cash collection, cash donation, things like that are riskier than a water pipe, a water system. That water system, that water pipe, the sewer line, that's not going anywhere. Cash, however, in donations or whatever, that can be taken, right? So cash is inherently risky. So we consider that as we evaluate the overall nature of an organization. What should we be looking at? Then we take a look for red flags. So after doing this for 25 years and being involved in academia and publishing articles and whatnot about this, you sort of develop an understanding of what to look for whenever you go out and perform interviews, so on and so forth. So I look for both behavioral red flags of individuals. I look for organizational red flags and I look for transactional red flags. And I'd like to now talk a little bit about some of those red flags that I encountered. I believe you'd be interested in hearing some of them and how that impacted the scope of what we were engaged to do. So from a governance perspective, I already talked about this, the importance of the code of conduct, code of ethics, conflict of interest, so on and so forth. At this point in time, the city does not have those policies in place. And we believe that that's something that the city should do. We recommend that the city does undertake a project in order to come up with those policies, communicate them and train employees on what the expectations are of behavior at work and how employees conduct themselves. I see this all the time, that employers assume that employees know how to behave at work. My experience tells me that's far from accurate. So establishing those expectations, training is critical in these areas. The code of conduct, ethics, conflicts of interest, those types of policies. The second thing I, I found to be of concern is the lack of a concerned line. So some people call this a hotline, an ethics line. There are different names for it, but it's a conduit. It's a, it's a mechanism where employees can voice concerns about what they see. See something, say something, right? Folks, a concern line is the number one way fraud, waste and abuse is identified. The city of Yukon's fraud hotline, concern line, whatever you'd like to call it, was discontinued several years ago. I think that's a big vulnerability. And my recommendation is to implement a new hotline, concern line, as soon as possible. That's one of the foundational elements of governance and moving forward. We also identified, and this is not unusual in smaller cities, smaller municipalities, I should say, that we noted a number of related employees. Now, again, there could be policies in place. You can separate folks, absolutely. However, there are certain instances, for example, if a city manager would be in that role, but a related party would be hired somewhere else in the city. Think about the awkwardness of that department director or the supervisor if they have to discipline that organ, that individual. That'd be very hard to do. In some cases, they might be afraid of retaliation, et cetera. So we believe that the city should reevaluate that and take a, take a close look at how related parties are employed. Next, so in 2015, the city of Yukon had a fairly extensive forensic audit performed, although in reading through it, I did notice that there were some scope limitations which were concerning to me. One of the things that I wanted to mention here tonight was that some of those findings were not fully addressed and still remain findings. There were both findings in the forensic audit as well as the 2015 reissued financial statement audit. Those findings need to be followed up on and my recommendation is that any future findings, obviously, be remediated immediately. So these repeat findings are critical in my mind and we're going to talk about what they are in the actual findings section. Next, and this is a little bit related to the lack of concern line, but we identified some instances where employees voiced concerns. But we believe based upon the documentation reviewed, et cetera, that the investigations were not appropriately conducted and they were not thorough and complete. In some cases, there were no investigations completed whatsoever. Last, based upon our interviews, our observations with folks, both current, former employees of the city, we believe that prior senior level management simply failed to lead by example. And unfortunately, in our review of former senior level management, we found emails that contained hardcore pornographic material as well as what I'll refer to as normal or if it can be normal, I apologize. Pornographic, general pornographic material. And that was transmitted to various other city employees. So that was of concern because again, as I talked about the importance of tone at the top, leading by example, transmitting the photos that I've seen is a complete breakdown of that. Let's talk about internal controls. So as we talked about, definitely need to document the process of internal controls so they can be performed, re-performed. Basic internal controls such as cash reconciliation, they need to be improved. We found old outstanding checks. We found deposits in transit that were years old. That is a red flag. Control over your cash and cash reconciliation are arguably, in my opinion, one of the most important internal controls you can have. Remember, we talked about risk and how cash is inherently risky? Right? In comparison to a sewer line, let's say. Well, your cash reconciliation is your first line of defense. Okay? Whenever it comes to control over your cash. Segregation of duties. Throughout the years, there was turnover, turnover of the treasurer's position. We identified instances where there's opportunity to enhance segregation duties. We'll talk about this a little bit later, but currently in the city, your human resources group is one of the same with the payroll group. Now there are different people that perform these tasks, but they're in the same, essentially in the same department. Those are two processes that you don't want to combine. And we'll talk a little bit about that later. Lack of IT controls. So a lot has changed over the years as it comes to IT technology. There are certain things that we looked at and certain things that, to a certain extent, inhibited our investigation. So some of them are the failure to have a system to record badge swipes as employees enter and leave a city facility. Typically, those swipes, okay, in order to open the door, they're recorded. So I can see who's entering, what time, that type of thing. Another thing is server logging. Basically, when does somebody log in? What applications are they using? As well as internet logs, things like that were missing and we believe that that should be remedied and we'll talk a little bit about that later also. Also decentralization. So you have a lot of departments at the city and those departments have their own procedures. One of the things that we looked at is, is there any central oversight or what's the magnitude? How big is the oversight of these departments? And we believe that there should be more oversight from city hall, from senior level management of each department, understanding what their policies and procedures are, what their internal controls are. And to whatever extent possible, they should be consistent. So some red flags that we also found is the abrupt turnover of former city treasurer as well as turnover of city manager, identification of the Yukon Community Support Foundation, a separate not-for-profit organization that is actually included on the books of the city. And what I mean by on the books is it's in their accounting software. That software is called INCODE. We found that to be very peculiar. That raised some questions in our mind and we'll talk a little bit about our findings there in a little bit. We also identified some relationships with large vendors that spanned many years, many years, going back to the 90s. And we've also identified a vendor that the relationship might go back to the 70s and that's based on some interviews. Well, having long-term vendors, it's, it's fine. As long as these high-dollar vendors are being competitively, competitively bid occasionally to make sure that you're getting the bang for your buck. We found that at least two of these high-dollar vendors had not been bid, as I said, since back in the 90s. One has never been bid, or at least we were not able to find any competitive bidding documentation. And we found another vendor that although relatively new, continues to win the bid year after year after year. And these services are not unique. And these services are not unique. That causes us to raise, you know, a red flag. How is that? Why can't others win? Also, in that case, we noticed that the number of bidders became fewer and fewer over the years. Well, that happens whenever somebody continues to win, and a lot of times, and I'm not saying this is the case in this particular instance, but other companies have a tendency of falling off whenever they feel that the system isn't fair. This company continues to win, why should I continue to put in a bid? That's one of the reasons why having a concern line and opening it up to your vendors who are involved in competitive bidding is so important. It's a standard control, and I believe that should be applied in Yukon. While we were talking with employees, both current and former employees, we gained an understanding of the culture in a little bit more detail. And many employees that we talked to, not all, but many, I would say, more than half, were concerned about the possible retaliation against them if they voiced concern. And the overlying or overarching tone that we observed was, and this is historical, "As an employee," and I'm reading from my notes, "As an employee, you don't question things." Whenever we see a culture like that, that raises red flags. What's going on? That caused us to expand our scope, and you'll hear about our results shortly. Also, another red flag was senior-level management being involved in all decisions, not allowing city employees to perform their job duties without interference, including who should be hired for certain jobs. Also, whenever we started our review, and this is just my feeling after doing this for 25 years, I got the feeling that at least initially, city employees were absolutely answering our questions, but they seemed reluctant to go beyond answering our specific We would ask a question and subsequently find additional detail through document review and talking to others and have to go back, and we'd be there like, "Well, we talked about this." And again, you know, it would have been helpful if, whenever we addressed the issue the first time, if employees would have elaborated a little bit more. So, that caused some additional time that needed to be taken to circle back. Other themes in our interviews, employees voiced concern about the lack of training and the lack of communication. Again, training and communication are two things that are very important to governance, and we look for those things. So, a number of red flags there. In summary, as we were taking a broader look, we found significant problems with governance, internal control, and we found significant red flags of potential malfeasance. That brings up to our additional scope, which included adding the Yukon Community Support Foundation, taking a look at payroll, human resources, the relationship between the city of Yukon and vendors, particularly competitive bid trends, status of past financial audit recommendations and forensic audit findings, and the historical payout from PEST. And we'll talk about what PEST is and what we found there as we go into the analysis section. All right. So, let's move on to findings. What did we find? I've already addressed a lot of these, so I'm just going to highlight the additional details. As I said before, we identified past audit issues that have not been addressed. We identified that internal control documentation either didn't exist or it was significantly outdated. We identified that. We also talked to the external financial statement auditor. They provided us with the documentation that the city provided them previously, and it We talked already about bank reconciliation, about the age reconciling items. Next, we found an issue with fixed assets. So, fixed assets at the city can run from a sewer line, right, water lines, all the way down to the lawnmowers used in parks and rec, the backpack blowers that they use, chainsaws, things like that. Well, there was no process that ensures that procedures for maintaining the list of assets throughout the various departments are consistent and roll up to the city's list that's ultimately used for financial reporting purposes. Some departments, like the IT department, for example, the IT department has a great process. They go out and they actually put stickers, barcode stickers, on all the IT equipment. And every year, they go out and they take an inventory. Unfortunately, that inventory result is never shared with City Hall to make sure that their list is up to date. Variations of that exist throughout every department. Some are doing, some have their own list, others don't. That needs to be consistent. We need to make sure that assets are safeguarded. Periodically, a full inventory should be done. Again, making sure that assets are accounted for. Now, I wanted to explain a little bit because that might seem startling to some, but whenever we talk about assets and the external auditors, okay, your financial statement auditors, they look at a concept called materiality. In other words, how much money is associated with assets? Well, the city has a lot of money in infrastructure. That infrastructure isn't going anywhere. The concept of materiality applies here because whenever you start talking about a lawnmower, in comparison to all that infrastructure, a lawnmower doesn't cost that much. Hence, your financial statement auditor doesn't necessarily pay a lot of attention to that. From forensic audit perspective, we do though, because those backpack blowers, those chainsaws, things like that, they can walk away. That's important to city council. That's important to management. We want to make sure that we have control over our assets, and we know if something walks away. So, fixed assets, there is definitely room for improvement there. I would start off by first reconciling the inventories that some of the departments have with what's maintained at City Hall to determine, you know, how good is that master list? And then I would periodically do physical inventories of departments, maybe not all same year, but maybe rotate them, something like that. All right. Let's talk about Yukon Community Support Foundation, YCSF. So, YCSF, the not-for-profit organization, and it was founded in 2001. Folks, I'm sure you're all familiar with Christmas in the Park. So, for years, YCSF was facilitating Christmas in the Park. For example, whenever citizens would make donations at Christmas in the Park, that would actually go into the YCSF bank account. Unfortunately, the city's costs associated with events such as YCSF were borne by the city. So, those donations did not go to cover the personnel costs. So, all of the folks running Christmas in the Park, city employees, the city is paying them for that time. It's not volunteered. So, that was a use of city funds, and not everybody understood that the city was bearing those costs and that the donations were going to YCSF. Additionally, we found where monies, and this is marketing money, from your health system. And you see the advertisements on your water towers. So, Yukon, the city of Yukon, actually the Yukon Municipal Authority has a contract with Integris Health for their logo up there. This contract or these contracts go back years. So, actually, it goes back, I believe, to the 90s, but we were more interested in what happened in 2008 and 2019. So, in 2008, there was a contract between Municipal Authority and the health system for $75,000. That money ultimately never made it to the city, but was deposited directly into YCSF. Additionally, in 2019, there were two payments, one for $75,000 and one for $30,000, again, for the same contract that went into the YCSF bank account. So, these monies were intended or contracted by the city that went into that not-for-profit We also identified where there were storage facilities that were built down on Ash Avenue. You may be familiar with them. The agreement for one of those buildings, it was to be used for Christmas decoration The cost of that building, whenever you break it out from the contract, was $263,719. YCSF, in their minutes, approved reimbursing Yukon for that building. And the city of Yukon voted in order to build those buildings, right? And in that meeting, one of the elements of this vote was that YCSF was going to pay for that building. That never happened. Ultimately, YCSF did however, pay $151,000 to expand one of those buildings. All right. Let's talk about payroll and HR. So, whenever we started talking to folks, we identified a number of common rumors throughout the city, both current, former employees, about inappropriate behavior of a senior-level city employee and another employee. We also learned in our various conversations that there's a lack of performance evaluation process. And as we already talked about, the cancellation of the hotline, fear of retaliation, many of these things we've already covered. So, we looked into the rumors, and we started with the rumor of the inappropriate relationship that was revealed through interviews. We dug a little bit deeper. We talked to former employees. We reviewed files on the city's network. And we went through a lot of old paper files that we discovered throughout the city. In those files, we identified a memo written by the city mayor at the time about what appears to be this relationship that we were hearing these rumors about. And this tone, this poor tone of the organization, because a lot of folks knew about this and about this taking place on city property, on city time, things like that. So, again, we looked into this. In addition to finding some files on the network, we also found in these paper files, with a lot of dust on them, written documents, written notes that pertained to this inappropriate relationship, handwritten. So, based upon what we read, based upon the interviews that we've conducted, and based upon our finding of these handwritten notes, we believe that there would have been sufficient evidence to actually undertake an investigation in that case. These types of incidents and the failure to adequately investigate them puts the city at risk. It also taints its culture. And it's a great example of how leadership, poor leadership, can destroy an organization. This ties right into the need for whistleblower policies, a concern line, an investigation policy, and it's critical that these investigations are fully documented. Next, payroll. We looked at payroll, and we looked at a former city manager and the payout at the end of their contract where they received 448 hours of vacation. end of their contract, where they received 448 hours of vacation over the cap of 800 hours, and that's in the employee handbook. This payment of this additional 448 hours came about because of an unwritten, unwritten policy that certain individuals, mainly senior leadership within the city, should receive more time because allegedly they don't have time or they don't have the ability to take vacation while employed. So in one instance, we found where this extra time cost the city approximately $34,895. We did take a look at the contract of this individual. There was no specific reference to additional vacation, and the contract was very specific in that if the contract did not address the benefit, the policies of the city as it pertains to every employee would apply. We believe that based upon additional work that we've done, that there are other employees who also were overpaid. We think that additional procedures should be conducted as soon as possible in order to identify those individuals, and the policy should be revisited, and a determination should be made if indeed, moving forward, those individuals should be paid out their entire balance, or whether this cap applies. However, whatever decision's made, it needs to be consistent. As I talked about already, changing gears a little bit, moving into purchasing, we looked at high-dollar vendors, we found some anomalies in bidding, as I've already discussed. We believe that the competitive bidding process should be revisited, particularly long-term Maybe there should be a three-year limit whereby every three years, regardless of our relationship with a particular vendor, we go back out for bid. We did take a look at duplicate payments, okay, and splitting of transactions, and what I mean by splitting of transactions is the city has certain dollar limits that you can spend up to without having to get additional approval. Well, a common technique used by individuals circumventing that is breaking a purchase into two smaller chunks so they don't exceed a spend limit. Because of the time that's involved with that, we weren't able to complete our procedures. That's something that the city might want to consider moving forward to do. Again, splitting a transaction, it's a very common scheme, and we see it frequently. Something to consider. Next, use of city vehicles for personal use. We found anomalies in a system that's called Fuel Master. So the city has its own fuel pump, and Fuel Master is the system basically that records mileage, how many gallons are pumped into city vehicles. So we gained access to Fuel Master, and we did a little bit of analysis. We did find some anomalies. We found one senior-level employee that, over their tenure, had a tendency of filling up on the weekends. 6% of their fill-ups were on Saturdays and Sundays, which we believe to be somewhat We also took a look at the fuel usage, and we cross-referenced it to the percentage of personal use that they were claiming, and ultimately that was being put on their W-2 as earned income. So if the city gives you a vehicle for personal use, the IRS wants their cut. So there's a formula that figures out, well, how much income have you derived from the use of a city vehicle, and that goes on to your W-2. By misreporting the percentage of personal use, lower presumably, you're not being taxed enough. In other words, you're not, the city's not reporting all of the taxable income it should, and that employee isn't being taxed enough, okay, because they haven't reported all of their income. So we found evidence of that, which is explained in more detail in our report. We also heard rumors about a prior city manager using city employees to run personal errands and asking city employees to perform tasks using city equipment in the city shop. Again, we took a look at these rumors, and we interviewed people, and we obtained pictures of these activities taking place. Although the timing of such pictures, okay, I don't know, for example, what time a picture was taken of city employees running these personal errands, all right, but there are pictures, just like there are pictures of personal items at the city shop. Based upon this, these quote-unquote rumors, I believe, have some credibility and need to be thoroughly investigated. And the city needs to implement stronger policies to outline expected behavior and how to monitor these things to prevent this from happening in the future. Again, I think the concern line would go very far. Somebody could report this, and it could be investigated timely. Again, investigated appropriately. We also looked at ordinance codification. Whenever an ordinance passes, city council, what happens to it? Well, ultimately, once it's signed off on, we go through formalities, it's uploaded into I'm not going to go into all of the results, but we found instances where there were some delays in that. We also found, as we were looking at sales tax, muncide, actually the initial ordinances pertaining to sales tax, there was a math error, and the sales taxes don't add up to 100% how they're portioned out. And that's in Section 98-77. It's in the report, you can take a look at it, but the percentages don't equal 100%. PEST, the Public Employee Sales Tax Fund. This was a finding back in 2015, that money was being taken out of PEST, and there wasn't any documentation as to what the PEST funds were being used for. And let me back up a little bit. So PEST funds, sales tax money that comes in for police, fire, and general employees. And this money is to be used for competitive wages and benefits, equipment, things like that. So we identified transfers that continue to take place today, monthly transfers. These transfers are coming from the PEST fund into the general fund, the pooled cash Again, there's been a lot of debate as to what PEST funds can be used for. This goes back years, 2015. I don't see that there's been any resolution. These issues still remain, these disagreements. So we read the ordinance, and as I said, PEST funds are to be used for competitive wages. So we talked to Chief Korn, the chief of police in Yukon, and we asked the chief, are police employees being paid a competitive wage? And he cited a study with surrounding communities, and the Yukon Police Department falls below the 50th percentile in comparable salary. That caused me to consider whether the PEST funds are being used appropriately. The ordinance clearly states that it's to be used for competitive wages and benefits. What happens if we're not competitive? Are these PEST funds being transferred to the general fund to cover payroll? Is that appropriate? These are some things that need to be considered and need to be talked about by management, council, and some type of resolution needs to be made, or resolution needs to become, come to, some agreement. Again, things like this festering for years is not good for the environment, the tone of the organization. That needs to be resolved. I also think that past funds that have been dispersed need to be accounted for. An audit should take place. What were these funds ultimately used for? Can that be tracked? Because keep in mind, it's going into a pooled cash account. Can it be tracked? I don't know, but that should be determined. Last, let's talk about budgeting. So we took a look at the budgeting process, we noted some anomalies whenever it came to amending budgets, particularly in 2022, 2023. We noticed that some amendments weren't properly signed off on, and I'm going to just use a broad characterization here. Some of the amendments did not have very good underlying documentation as to what was actually going on. Some of that information, some of those examples are in the appendix of our report, but we think that communication needs to be enhanced, controls over amendments need to be enhanced. In general, that process could use some improvement. Folks, that was a lot to digest in this short period of time. Well, maybe not so short, but I'd like to thank you for your time, and at this point, I could take any questions if we, if it's appropriate.
Thank you, Michael. Are there any questions from council members at this time for Mr. Breyon, a partner of North American Forensic Accounting?
Mr. Mayor, I've got a few.
Go ahead, Councilman Trevor.
On the first page of this report, I just want to note that it says additional, some of these allegations and matters identified to such outrageous they are simply inappropriate to public, to publish publicly. That's the extent of this audit. That's the cold truth. What we see in this audit is just the tip of the iceberg. One, I'd like to know, who authorized the mayor to conduct an investigation on such And if so, who was that? Or they authorized to do an investigation on such allegations?
Do you have any feedback there, Michael, based on your review?
I do not know the origins of the complaint to the mayor at the time.
Mike, what are we calling senior officials? At what level of the city are we talking senior officials?
Sure. So that would be city manager, assistant city manager, and department head.
So department heads and up are considered to be senior in your report?
Correct.
Michael, when you think about, you know, a city that has around a little bit more than 250 employees, a budget of around $50 million, you guys do forensic audits and reviews of all sorts of organizations, for-profit entities, municipalities, not-for-profits. When you think about that kind of size of organization, and based on what you've spent approximately 18 weeks, about three and a half of which were onsite here in Yukon, how do you compare Yukon as an organization, as an entity, in its historic leadership, governance, process controls compared to other entities you see?
The governance aspect was one of the worst I've ever seen, if not the worst. The, some of these issues, some of these behaviors went, continued for 30, 30 years or thereabout. Not to, it tells a big story in that there weren't any investigation, that people were afraid of retaliation, afraid of bringing this up, and nothing was done for that period, length of time. That says a lot.
What do you think is the key driver of, I mean, if you say that this is, you know, as bad as you've seen it or possibly the worst, what's the, what's the driver of that kind of subpar governance environment?
Leadership. The tone at the top, leadership. And in this case, it would be city manager, but to a certain extent, it's city council. However, as I said, we identified a lot of problems with communication.
On page 13, you mentioned the officers of this organization, consisting of senior leadership, including city council members and other community businesses, leaders, and citizens. Can you elaborate on who this might be?
Sure. So over the years, again, YCSF was formed in 2001. And YCSF was actually formed by Jim Cross. His name is on the 2001 Form 990. I actually have those 990s right here so I can answer your question a little bit more specifically. So the signature on the 2001 990 So the signature on the 2001 990 was James D. Crosby, president. I have the 2003 Form 990. Would you like me to read the, and again, a 990, you can get this out on the internet, so it's public knowledge. Would you like me to read the list?
Yeah, it'd be helpful.
First is Ray Wright, who is the chairman, Tammy Kretschmar, treasurer, Jan Scott, member, Shelley Shelby, secretary.
I was not added until, we found out about it in 2019, Jeff. And that's when we added a city council person, because prior to that year, a city council person was not involved. It was just city employees. I think it was 18 or 19.
I, I don't know. I don't have all the 990s, but it's very common for the board members to change. An individual by the name of Doug Souter, S-A-U-T-E-R, John Albert, John Leonard, Mai Nguyen, and Tom Arnold. That's the list of the officers and directors on the 2023 Form 990 of Yukon Community Support Foundation.
Prior to 2018, there were only three people on the board. And then when I was added, they began adding more people.
Have you ever seen in any other cities you've looked at anything like the YCSF?
Not like how this is set, no.
And we questioned that back in 2018. And that's when we said we wanted to have more of an input on that. And since I'd been on there, what the money's been used for is to buy the decorations for the community Christmas in the park. Also, they're the ones who use that. They pay for season, sounds of the season. They pay for, what is it? They do Fourth of July, the Philharmonic. So they pay for cultural events and for Christmas in the park.
I thought we approved money for Sounds of the Season here.
We do, but they also pay a portion of that. Like I said, up until we discovered it in 2018, I had never even heard of it.
Michael, when you look at organizations that have this kind of legacy of poor leadership and challenges within their governance environment, how do you see these organizations actually, like, make a change, turn a page, start fresh? How does that occur in an effective way, based on your experience?
It starts with leadership. It's essential to get leadership with the right tone, leading by example. Without a change in leadership, it's going to be very, very difficult to change the culture. Now, you have had a turnover of city manager. City manager is the CEO, essentially, of the organization. It's up to the city manager to facilitate this change and use some of these mechanisms we talked about, code of conduct, right, code of ethics, to facilitate that change, right? However, the city, particularly the city manager, perhaps city council, needs to make a decision about folks in leadership roles that have observed this behavior over the years and have failed to elevate it appropriately so action could take place. That has to, the failure for approximately 30 years, that has to raise concern, not only of the past city manager, CEO, but others. But ultimately, perhaps unfortunately, making some of those decisions will fall back on the new city manager, the new CEO.
What other questions do we have for Michael regarding this report?
Have we separated ourselves from you, CSF, like the city and our financial CSF?
We have in many regards, Councilman. I mean, this year, for example, Christmas in the Park, the payments were received into city funds, did not go into YCSF. So the payments for city time and city personnel in that event were paid for out of the funds that were accumulated into the city funds. So the cash that was collected at the end of the site, that went directly into city accounts. And again, people were paid out of that. Since May, we have had very little to do with YCSF. And I just make that as a blanket statement without getting into the particulars there. But I think that relationship is on hold pending further, further dialogue.
And that was a question we always had, when we had in 2018, is where is that Christmas in the park money going? And is the city being reimbursed? So it's not something that we haven't been questioning for quite some time. It just took several years to get an answer.
And I guess I'm going to hammer on this sexual deal one more time, just because it's a, it's a big problem. People need voices when that thing's happened to you. And until it's happened to you, or somebody close to your home, you don't know how it feels. It impacts the whole family. Subsequently, we identified a memo written in the city mayor who decided not to investigate what believed to be prior allegations. This memo was in electronic files of individuals who initially told us that they knew nothing about these allegations. We conducted our own investigation into these allegations and through multiple interviews and documents, which included in handwritten notes, sexual encounters found in an old storage box. And we decided not to do a full investigation on this by somebody that is underqualified, our city or prior city mayor.
I will not comment on this, as I told him, because it's a personnel issue unless HR or a lawyer is present. It wasn't investigated.
Pre-investigation.
There was reprimand. The vice mayor asked for it to be investigated. It was investigated, and there were consequences that came about with that individual.
Are you qualified to do an investigation, ma'am?
I was told to do one.
Are you qualified?
Yes, I felt like I was.
And as a counselor, retired counselor, and somebody who serves on this city council of a governing body, don't you feel ethically to report this to police department? Or by law?
It was a personnel issue. HR was involved. Both parties were adults, and we did terminate, and there was reprimand.
The report doesn't show any of this. I think that is unethical as it possibly gets with that kind of allegations. That's my opinion. And I bet a lot of these women feel the exact same way. If you don't have the qualifications to do an investigation on bodily harm possibly done.
It was not sexual harassment.
Sexual encounters.
Sexual encounters of two mutual adults, not sexual harassment.
I think the biggest challenge in any, in any organization, when a leader is sexually involved with a subordinate, there's a power, there's a position of power that's under, that's playing out there. And whether it seems like it's two consenting adults or not, it's inappropriate. It's blanket inappropriate.
And actions were taken.
And when, and as a council, we will not stand for that kind of behavior in our city. And when those, when those matters are brought to our attention, we as a council, not unilaterally as mayor, not unilaterally as vice mayor, unilaterally as any council person, we will act as a body. We'll consider these matters. We'll investigate them to the full. There will be no retaliation against any employees that report these things. They're unacceptable in any organization. Period. We're turning a page. We will investigate them as a governing municipal body.
They were investigated. And again, because it's personnel, we are not at liberty to go into the details about what was happened.
Mike Burris, 300 East Platte. I found this on the agenda. I don't think it's the entire report. He made reference to an awful lot of stuff that...
We didn't find any further report, Mr. Burris, beyond that one single memo that was written by the former mayor. We, we asked, more specifically, North American Forensic Accounting requested any investigative files and were, they came up really short. They, they don't have any documentation of the, of the supposed investigation that occurred.
I understand, but he also, he also mentioned $75,000 here, $35,000 there.
Yeah, I thought you were referring to the sexual, the sexual matters here. The, the, yes, in, in that particular report that Mr. Brien has delivered to us here, there are approximately five or six pages that show the diversion of funds from the Integris Water, Water Tower leases that have the Integris logo, the diversion of funds that should have landed in city accounts and were diverted to the Yukon Community Support Foundation in 2009 and 2018, I believe.
And, and I actually, I printed off the stuff that was on the, on the, off the website. Trouble is, so much of it's really difficult to read. If, I would be happy to drive down if I can get a...
Certainly, we can, we can certainly print you off a copy, Mr. Burris.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Brien at this time? Yes, ma'am. Please approach the podium. State your name and your address.
Hi, my name's Mary Beth Bates. I live at 3808 South Manning Road, El Reno, Oklahoma. I was here just for the annexation issue. I'm shocked at what I'm hearing about the forensic audit. I've lived here for 24 years. I read the paper all the time. I have a specific question. Where's any of the donation money for Christmas in the park going? If the city of Yukon is already paying for all of the setup for it and all the workers, what account does that money go into? And who's in charge of it?
That was our question for several years. We kept asking, where is this money? And how much money is being collected? We couldn't even get that amount.
So at the end of the night, whenever they take the money, and who do they hand it to? Who deposits it?
The, I don't know.
I, I can speak to what happened this year. I've been here for a little over three months. So what has happened this year is that a city employee, we had city volunteers, I say volunteers, people who came in, and a city employee would take the money, that money was collected that evening and put in a safe box. And the next day, it was deposited into a city special revenue fund. So it was being deposited into a city account to be used to pay either the hours or to be used in years to come to pay for decorations for that. But it is, at least this year, YCSF was not involved in any capacity with Christmas in the park.
Is there any balance ledger anywhere of those funds?
Yes, there is.
Now, there is. Yeah.
There is, there is one with YSF. If you'd let me finish what I was saying a while ago. That money went into that account. That account is where we purchased all of the ornaments, the decorations. That was what we used to purchase. Not we, that is what YSF. So when I got on, that is when they started diversifying a little and doing other things too than just Christmas in the park, because they also received donations to that nonprofit. We questioned that for years, where that money went.
You also mentioned a special sales tax monies fund. I can't remember what it was called.
Pest, yes.
Pest. And he said that the monies were not fully accounted for. Is there any, do you guys have any idea of what percentage or what portion of those monies are accounted for?
Yeah, the monies are accounted for, but the transfers, there's some questions and some unresolved differences of opinion within the city. And historically, this has existed with differences of opinion of how those transfers should be made. So the way, the way that sales tax is collected is it comes in, the state collects all sales tax and then remits to the city. And then those funds are placed into appropriate accounts based on our ordinances. But once they're placed in police, fire, or general employee pest, for instance, those portions of the sales tax, they are then transferred into the general fund to be expended on the appropriate expenditures. But in the past, there have been just monthly blanket transfers that have occurred at set amounts rather than specific expenditures. And I think as a council and as a city management, you know, our city manager, leading the effort, we need to clarify that process and make it very specific so that we can follow, one, follow the ordinance, and two, make it transparent to the public that the funds are being spent in the exact way that the ordinance prescribes.
Okay, you had also mentioned another fund, I believe, YCSF.
It's a nonprofit organization.
That's the one you were talking about, the Christmas in the park.
The, it was the other fund that I believe the previous city manager, Mr. Clark?
Crosby?
Crosby, Mr. Crosby, yes. What was the name of that fund?
That's the one you were talking about, Yukon Community Support Foundation, that he started.
Has any legal action been taken against the previous city manager? Have any charges been filed? Has there been any type of ethics investigation into what he's done? This specifically concerns me because he's the new city manager in Chickasha as of last November 24th.
He's been our city manager twice.
Yeah, to my knowledge, there hasn't been any legal action taken, Ms. Bates.
That concerns me. Thank you for answering my questions.
Thank you, Ms. Bates. Any other questions for Mr. Brien or amongst the council members here? Yes, sir, Mr. Bishop?
Trey Bishop, 12541 West Reno Avenue. I've heard several times, not just from Shelley, I'm not trying to bust your balls, Shelley, but I've heard several times that this is a personnel issue and we can't discuss it. I'm familiar with a provision of the open rec, I only know like two laws, and Open Records Act is one of them, that personnel files, certain personnel files can be withheld, certain personnel files must be revealed to the public. But there's nothing in there, to my knowledge, that says certain personnel, personnel files must be withheld. For example, if a, if an employee has been reprimanded for some reason, I don't think there's any... there's anything in there in the statute or, now, if there's something in Yukon's ordinance, you know, Mr. Reinhardt can tell us, but I don't think there's anything that says you can't tell people why someone was fired, why someone was reprimanded, what they did wrong. It may be embarrassing, but, I'm sorry, the gentleman that's been speaking to us over the.
Mr. Brien, yes.
Mr. Brien. He's talking about failures in leadership, and I think this is also maybe failure to take responsibility for some things that have been done by hushing them up. And maybe it's not a good idea to hush things, these things up. Maybe it's a good idea that these things be known, no matter who it embarrasses. Thanks.
Right, and Trey, and I didn't say, I said, I would talk about them with HR present or attorney.
I understand you.
Cause I, yeah, I.
I don't expect you guys to know all the laws.
I'm not talking without HR there and telling me what I can or cannot say.
Thank you, Mr. Bishop.
My last question from Mike on, on the interweb here is, based on these discussions with citizens and some of the city employees, it was YCSF would reimburse the city for labor costs, including storages, traffic, et cetera. Is there anywhere that shows we've been reimbursed for all the funds for labor, traffic, and storage?
There's no evidence of reimbursement to the city. However, it would, there would need to be a more thorough audit performed to, before I would conclude 100% because I did see money going either way. Okay? So that's something that really should be done, and that's addressed in the report. A thorough audit should be done and a demand should be made on YCSF to produce all of their records so we can get to the bottom of it. But the short answer, okay, is that there's no reimbursement that we became aware of.
And I think Jeff and I asked for like a 10-year spreadsheet of their expenditures and the money they received. We got like two or three years and it wasn't detailed what it was until I went on board and then now they do a detailed expenditure report. So that's $75,000 and then the building was before we even knew it existed.
I guess I lied, Mr. Pillmore, Mr. Mayor, one more. Budget item six was not signed by the council and the lying item for so had been removed. How did the budget amendment escalate from $865,000 to 1.73 million? And who's responsible for this change? And what did it go to?
So on page, this is all explained on page 84, 85 of the appendix of the report. And this clearly shows that on page 82 of the report, that the budget amendment six, appendix Q, was not signed by city council. Interestingly, it was stamped by the state auditor and inspector, which I find to be unusual because it's my understanding that they would look for something like that. So that's the answer on the one document that wasn't signed by council. The second question that you had pertaining to the $865,000 budget amendment back in 22, 23, how that was presented to council? And let me read the memo. The memo on page 84 says, ladies and gentlemen of the council, before you this evening is a budget amendment increasing appropriations within the fiscal year 23 budget by a total of $865,000. We've been notified by Oklahoma Department of Transportation that they are wrapping up their final review of the I-40 Frisco interchange project and we are due to receive $865,000 in surplus funds back. We anticipate receiving these funds by late September or early October. So the total amendment, actually, if you take a look at what happened, was there was an increase in the revenue, but there was a corresponding increase in capital improvement. So what I'm unsure of here, okay, and how this all played out is did city council at the time understand, and based upon the documents I'm looking at, did they understand that, well, we received $865,000, but we're also appropriating that $865,000? And that was appropriated to Capital Improvement Street.
So the memo, the memo, memo only describes one half of that entry.
Right. Correct. Once again, okay, was city council properly informed? This whole communication thing that we've been talking about? This is, this was very confusing to me. And so whenever you get this extra money in, it was reported, hey, we got this extra money. City council's thinking, great. But then it was also appropriations were also increased by that same amount of money, capital improvements. What was that money ultimately used for? I guess is my question. Was it used? I don't know. That was sort of one of the points that we wanted to make there.
Yeah, the, the four or five or six errors that were in that 2022, 2023 budget, in my mind, are just unacceptable. Like, that's basic blocking and tackling, being able to appropriate and expend funds according to a published budget and file it with, appropriately with the, with the state auditor, according to state statute. That's just, we can't make mistakes on that stuff. Any other questions on, on the report that Mr. Brien has presented? Seeing no more questions at this time, having heard his report, we'll now move on to item number four on the agenda. We'll consider a motion to approve resolution 2025-01, a resolution acknowledging the findings of the 2024 forensic review conducted by North America Forensic Accounting LLC, affirming the city council's commitment to improving the city of Yukon's governance and control environment and directing the implementation measures to correct identified difficulties and ensure integrity, transparency, and accountability in municipal financial and operational practices. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion on this resolution?
There's a lot of hard dates on there. City manager, are you going to be able to meet those deadlines? There's a lot of hard, hard dates.
I would say at this point, I'll make every effort to meet those deadlines and I'll keep council informed where I can't meet those deadlines. There are, there are 154 items.
And we can, you know, Mike, as you, as you project plan this out and kind of think about the team members that need to be responsible for each item under your direction, we can create a Gantt chart, so to speak, or a, or a spreadsheet to track these items and the, the work that you've done to review it and Michael Brien has done to review this resolution to ensure its completeness and that we're covering, because there's, there's nothing worse that we could do than to receive this forensic report and not take thorough action. So this is extensive.
I think, Mayor, I think the one thing, if I may please, I think the one thing that I would look for from council, you know, as I said, it's 154 items, there are 27 reports to city council, there are 22 policies to be developed. I mean, it's, it's exhaustive. It is a lot. And I would remind council of, you know, where we're at, at the 30,000-foot level. We're just now stepping into budget season. We are all aware, and I've made council aware of our, our water supply conundrum.
Yes.
We're about ready to step off into some economic development activity and there are several other really large ticket items that the city is, is either engaging or will shortly engage on. We understand that, that we need to be deliberate.
Absolutely, and we have limited resources, so we need to apply them where we can.
So we need to prioritize. And that's where I would look to council to establish some form of prioritization here. Mayor, you and I can talk about this and I, I think we'll probably be on the same page we are on a lot of issues. I talk about prioritization and how we approach this and how we peel this back. You know, parenthetically, I would note that it took us 30 years to get here and we're not going to fix it in three weeks. You know, we can make some really good starts and we can lay some groundwork and start knocking away some of these, and I think we will, I know we will, but it is a lot.
Yeah, it's a lot of work. And I, I think.
I feel confident we'll make substantial improvements. I'm not going to commit to finishing every deadline on here by every date. As I say all the time, I've been doing this 28 years now. That would be a foolish thing to state on the record. I won't do that.
You know, I think, my view is we are turning a page in Yukon. We're not going to tolerate the ways of the past at all. We're moving forward. We're going to implement a robust governance environment, starting with this resolution of the city council, then the leadership and direction of our great city manager, Mike Castro. And we, as a council, we as a city, we as municipal, municipal organization, we gotta live, but you know, Mike said in our meeting in December, we have to live by a great code that he quoted. That code was the West Point Honor Code, which he lived under during his, his years at, at that historic institution. A cadet will not lie, cheat, steal, or tolerate those who do. And I would add to that, will not sexually abuse or harass employees, will not cover up things or anything like that. We, we have to hold ourselves to account. So we're looking forward, but we're not ignorant of the past. Any other comments from council persons or, or the public on this resolution? Very well, seeing no more comments, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Pillmore?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
At this time, we'll consider a possible recommendation, direction from the city council to the city manager to hire a finance director. I make a motion to recommend and direct the city manager to hire a finance director. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this item? Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Selby?
Yes.
Pillmore?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
At this time, we'll conduct a public hearing in consideration of approving for the rebuilding American infrastructure with sustainability and equity raise discretionary grant through the US Department of Transportation to make improvements along Garth Brooks Boulevard from Northwest 10th to Vanu Man Avenue, the intersection of Northwest 10th and Garth Brooks Boulevard, and the improvements at the 10th Street and Cornwell Drive/Check Hall Road intersection. I now open the hearing. Do I have any comments at this hearing? Seeing no additional comments, I will now close the hearing. At this time, we'll consider approving the bid specifications and authorizing team design to advertise for bids for an on-call water and sewer project as recommended by the city engineer. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second. Do I have any discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Shriver?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Pillmore?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
At this time, we'll consider approving the bid specifications and authorizing team design to advertise for bids for an on-call concrete and asphalt paving and storm sewer project as recommended by the city engineer. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Wooten?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Pillmore?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
At this time, we'll consider approving a design change for the Northwest 10th Street
and Sheedec Parkway intersection project to eliminate the need to relocate power poles as recommended by the city engineer. Do I hear a motion? So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Can someone explain this a little bit more for us?
We provided some details in the, the council agenda. So the existing Northwest 10th Street has, the outside lanes are 14 foot, 14 foot wide, the inside lanes are 12 foot. So when you hear us say 14, 12, 12, 14, we're talking about going across the road. So in order to put in left turn signals, left turn lane on Northwest 10th Street requires an additional 12-foot lane. So the original design is basically we're widening the road six feet on each side to get the additional 12 feet. Well, to do that, the OG&E power poles are about two or three foot from the curb line. And then you go a little bit further, a little bit, there's a sidewalk, then we have gas line, Oklahoma City water line. So going through the utility meetings, OG&E requested to relocate their poles to one foot with, inside the right of way. So the pole will be one foot inside the right of way. So if this is the right of way line and you have a pole here like this, will that mast arm that carries the electrical wires actually overhangs into private property?
You want to tell us on, we've got some pictures up here. Does that help?
Uh, go back one, or go, go down. Let me see. Go up. Keep going. Right, that, this, let me just come up here for a second. So this is, this is what we would like to do, 14, 12, 12, 12, 12. And here's the right of way line. And then if you just lift this up just a little bit, see how this is what the existing road looks like on the south side? That's the curb, about three foot is the power pole. Well, we want to move this power pole right here, but this arm that carries the wire goes past the right of way line. And so OG&E cannot put their facilities and overhang the right of way, so they require an overhang easement. So the city of Yukon has been trying to acquire that easement and Roger has been helping. The developers, they do not want the power poles set there and they do not want to give us an overhang easement. They say it's not part of their development. They would like for it to be underground. Well, OG&E's only, OG&E's paying for this relocation. OG&E's only, they're required to relocate with power poles. There's a substantial cost to go underground. The developers don't want to pay for it. City of Yukon doesn't want to pay for it. So that's where we're at. So to avoid relocating the poles, we can keep the south, we won't even move the south curb line, we'll just extend six feet to the north, but that, that will give us five 11-foot lanes. The left turn lane will actually be 11 foot, 10 inches. We do have 11-foot lanes just right out here in front of City Hall. There will be a little shift in the roadway. There is a cost savings. The original design is 1,230,000. That's our current cost estimate, cost opinion. By just, by going to the five-foot, 11-lanes, the cost would be reduced 288, $280,000.
What's the safety issue? Are there any? By making it short, not as.
By making it short, not as, making it narrower?
It'd be more traffic calming. I mean, it's still, the normal car is eight-foot wide, and you have 11-foot lanes. It's just people aren't accustomed to it. They'll have to get used to it. We did look at a third option, and that would be going with five 12-foot lanes. That would require us to move the south curb line over, and we would still have to relocate the OG&E poles, but we believe we could put the poles where the existing sidewalk is. And we'd be able to do it in the existing right-of-way. That would require OG&E to go back and do a total redesign and would push the project. If they had to start all over, we're looking at anywhere from nine months to a year to get the poles moved.
Which realistically means 18 months to three years.
Right.
Yeah.
It's just a little frustrating that this developer is going to benefit by this intersection, yet doesn't want to play ball with the original plan. That's a little frustrating.
We've tried. Roger's been in communication with their attorneys, and we have tried for how long now? Six or?
Yeah, probably six to eight months, maybe 10 months, Mitchell, back and forth. We proposed many different options. We last went back to them and told them we were going to have the engineers work on a new design process, which seemed to be like the most economical way to appease all the parties and get the project completed. We owe them the improvements by agreement. We have to proceed with that.
Too bad we got to that point with what we got to this. We could have worked this out in that.
But I want everybody to understand, we're gonna, you're not going to drive, there's going to be, the project length is about eight or 900 feet. So there will be a portion, if you're driving down Northwest 10th Street, say you're going from west to east, you are going to kind of shift, it'll be a gradual shift over, and then you'll shift back over and get back in your wide lanes, your two 14-foot outside lanes. The one thing we will do with the 11-foot lanes, we do have drainage grates and hoods. We will actually bump those out, so they're not within that 11-foot driving lanes.
Still catch the water.
It'll still catch the water, and a tire won't drive over the grate that you see.
Anything's better than what we have right now. Because there's just so many wrecks there, and so having an 11-foot lane.
Yeah. The, going from 12 to 11 doesn't bother me that much. The shift, I don't like all that much.
Right.
To give you an idea, if you drive, you know, Oklahoma City's been widening their roads out sort now and west. They're building four 12-foot lanes throughout the city. They've been doing it for 20 years. They made a decision 20 years ago not to do 14, 12, 12, 14, because they, they said, hey, that's four feet every mile, and look how many miles we've got to build. So that's why they do-
I think the traffic, the traffic calming aspect of narrower lanes is a positive improvement. People love to drive fast, but at the end of the day, like, there's actually some interesting benefits to slower-moving traffic on our, on our, you know, primary surface streets. You can do your high speeds on I-40, but drive at a reasonable speed down 10th Street or Garth Brooks and stop in at one of our shops.
Yeah. So I did look, on Main Street, it's 30 miles an hour right now, and the speed limit posted on Northwest 10th Street through our project limits is 40 miles.
People will naturally drive a little bit slower as the lane's narrow. Okay. Any other questions on this item? Seeing no more discussion or questions, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Zimmerman?
No.
Wooten?
No.
Shriver?
No.
Selby?
Yes.
Pillmore?
Yes.
At this time, we'll consider a motion to remove from the table, a motion to approve the services agreement between Lighthouse Services and the city of Yukon to provide the city of Yukon with an ethics hotline. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
I have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? This is a motion to remove from the table. Seeing no more, no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Shriver?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Selby?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
Pillmore?
Yes.
The motion has been removed from the table. We'll now take up a motion to approve the services agreement between Lighthouse Services LLC and the city of Yukon to provide the city of Yukon with an ethics hotline. Before we have a motion, we'd like to hear a presentation from city manager Mike Castro.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council, for indulging me and giving me an extra month to look at this. And we do have it up there. Fantastic. Now, let's see if our technology is working. It is working. This will be quick. It's three slides. So I had the opportunity to go back and to actually work with Lighthouse. They did a product demo for me, it was myself and Jason. We looked at it. It's a good product. It's a very useful product. I like the flow of the product. I like the options that they could provide, and I think it will be a good tool for us to use. I want to go through real quick and talk about some of the implementation on this before you take a vote, so you understand what we're going to be doing as a staff in response to this request in this direction. So the objectives, I have several of them here. I'm going to highlight about two or three of them, and then we'll move on. Investigate the legitimacy and timeliness of ethics concerns. And I think a lot of that, at least initially, and these are kind of prioritized. I think a lot of that will relate to our education program that we're going to put forward. We want to make sure that the employees understand what is and what is not an ethics complaint and what constitutes maybe a personnel matter. I would hate, and using an example from earlier this evening, on the one hand, if someone had a sexual harassment complaint, this is not the avenue to bring it up. The avenue to bring it up is to your department director or to the city manager. You know, that would be an appropriate venue for that. Now, if it gets ignored, and you're not satisfied with the action, then this is the avenue to bring it up. So again, a lot of that will work towards education, making sure employees understand the proper usage of this tool. Provide a secure reporting environment. One of the things that I liked about the Lighthouse product is that you can really ratchet it down in terms of who has access to the meat and potatoes of the reporting. So if somebody is concerned about privacy, is concerned about everybody in the city knowing their business, this enables you, through your administrative privileges, to really lock it down to a couple of people, your key decision-makers that will have access to this. Now, of course, the complainant will have access to it, and they'll have a tool to understand at each step of the process where their complaint is. So that was another good aspect, again, of the product that I did like. Follow applicable personnel and open records laws. And we may visit with Roger about this, but we're a government entity, and we are subject to open records laws. And we just need to make sure we're aware of that. We make employees aware of that also in full disclosure. And my last comment in terms of objectives, monitor trends and provide feedback. And this is maybe one of the things that probably excites me most about this idea is, it enables you to collect data and look for trends. And look and see if there are issues that continue to be repetitive. If there are, maybe that's an avenue for education. Maybe that's an avenue for some additional training. But again, this idea that it all kind of cycles back, and you take the feedback that you have, you address the complaints, but in a broader sense, you're also able to look at what's going on in the organization in a holistic manner and understand if you have repetitive complaints or repetitive issues. So I'm going to move on and talk about the planned highlights. So provide for an ethics code, use the Lighthouse application. We talked about that. We did the product demo. I was favorably impressed with that. Define, again, an ethics violation, education process, safeguards in place to avoid conflict of interest, and I have retaliation highlighted. So that's also a very big concern. Address that retaliation concern. Open internally to city employees. You know, I know there is a desire on the part of council to expand this, perhaps either to vendors or to the outside citizenry at large. I'd like to defer on the latter two for a couple of reasons right now. I think it's important internally for us to get our act together. It's important internally for us to get this up and working, which we will do. In terms of external products, I think there are, and I have used other products and other solutions that I think are better at addressing issues externally. And these are products that integrate completely with our web design and our webpage. One of the more favorable ones is a product called See Click Fix. And that interacts really good with Civics Plus-type environments. And it is just, if you want to go out, I'm sure they have a demo out there, you can go out and look at it, and that is probably one of the more user-friendly and useful products that exist. It's reasonably priced. I may come at you in a couple of months and say, you know, I want to pay for that, and I want to get it integrated into the city. But I would like to start out, let's get it internally. That's where our bigger issues are right now. Having heard the NAFA report, I think, again, look at the internal application of this. Move on to the others at an appropriate time. And the other thing I wanted to stress here, this is not a replacement for the city's grievance policy as outlined in our personnel manual. We have a personnel manual, we have a grievance policy. If we need to make changes to that, we can, and I can bring those to you as far as a recommendation. I've not had a grievance in my short time here, knock on wood, but just the same, I think we do have a solid grievance policy. It's outlined fairly well, and let's make sure that that works also. And again, just to recap very quickly the procedure, as we see it at this early juncture, employee submits a complaint, initial review by the ethics committee. That ethics committee will be a couple of people, two or three people, probably three people at most. So myself, maybe Mitchell, maybe Jason, and we'll receive the complaint at that point. We're going to randomly assign a department head to be the investigator for this. We'll provide that guidance. The clock starts to tick. The investigation is completed. Findings and recommendations of the investigator come back my way, and I make the final call. I can either affirm the findings and recommendations, or quite possibly, I could go in and say, no, I think it needs to be something else. Now, if the complaint is on me personally, that goes to the ethics committee. They would work with Roger, and again, that probably would come to council as a whole. Complaint notification of resolution. We want to keep the complainant informed at all times. And again, using that tool, that Lighthouse tool, it had very good, very good resources for the complainant to have a current status that they can access. And then, again, implement reporting, look at the trends, and then it all cycles back. So this is a high-order review of the process as we see it. There's been a great deal of thought that has been put into this, and I think we'll have, we've got the beginnings of a good framework to have a good process for this. I think we'll have something that council will be proud of and can get on board with very quickly.
Thank you, Mike.
Mayor, that's all I had. Were there any questions from council?
Any other questions for Mr. Castro regarding his process outline? I think it's very thorough how you've outlined it, and I look forward to seeing this implementation.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
All right. The motion has been made and seconded. Any other discussion? This is, again, the motion to approve the services agreement between Lighthouse Services and the city of Yukon. Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Selby?
Yes.
Shriver?
Yes.
Wooten?
Yes.
Pillmore?
Yes.
Zimmerman?
Yes.
At this time, we'll enter into discussion-only item regarding the city actions with regards to annexation efforts to the west of Yukon City Limits. I'll now open this discussion. I'd like to make a statement to begin this discussion that gives a little bit of background, and then we'll open it up for council members and the public. At its core, Yukon values collaboration, respect for property rights, and the importance of building community through mutual consent. Yukon actually has historically been adverse to annexation. As recently as 2023, Yukon deannexed a portion of Wilshire to Oklahoma City. I believe annexation only makes sense when it's the desire of a vast majority of the landowners, and the city can sustainably deliver municipal services to that area. Incorporating additional land expands the community and is best when it develops organically and certainly with the consent of landowners. Yukon initiated a process in December, actually in our last meeting, in mid-December, that involved two parallel paths. The first we followed was the traditional annexation procedures required by state statute. It involved notice periods, mailings, a public hearing, which was originally scheduled for today, and soliciting landowner consent for what we called Phase One. This was a small area to our west. Think of it as the area immediately to our west that is between Route 66 and I-40, and call it a section north and a section south, a section north of Route 66 and a section south of Route 66. And the notice was duly published for two consecutive weeks in the Yukon progress. And then the second path that we followed, based on some feedback we got from landowners, some of you may be in this room, was voluntary positions for annexation from landowners themselves. And these are permitted separately by state statute. Think of it as annexation in the opposite direction, where landowners petition the city to be annexed in. And we received about half a dozen of those from families like the Knight family, the Williams family. And they just, they demonstrated a clear desire to be included in Yukon City Limits. They're all, they're already eating dinner here, they're going to church here, they have many friends here and do business here. While we don't agree with the approach that El Reno took on legal and even more so on moral grounds, we're not able to take action to annex any of these areas until their annexation attempt is either reversed through legal action or a willful deannex act, deannexation act of El Reno City Council. To put it more bluntly, when you're trying to build community, coercion is not a productive path. In other words, contrary to rumors, I didn't force my wife to marry me. I asked. That's called starting on the right foot. She had a choice. I'm the lucky one that she said yes. El Reno's approach raises significant legal and ethical questions. Annexing land without the clear consent of owners undermines the foundation, foundational principles of cooperation and mutual respect that guide municipal governance. While we understand their concerns about Oklahoma City's westward expansion, annexation by coercion is never the answer. It's both legally questionable and counterproductive to fostering good relationships between neighboring municipalities. I try not to make farmers angry either, because they're typically well-armed. Yukon remains committed to respecting the rights of property owners and ensuring that any future annexation efforts align with our values of sustainable growth, community development, and mutual respect. We'll work collaboratively with our neighbors to build a thriving region that benefits us all. With that, open it up to any council members that would like to make any statements or the public that have questions or comment about annexation that's happened in the last month.
I just want to say, I agree 100% with you on what you said there. What El Reno did was, I watched the meeting. It was a joke, and I was disappointed in our neighbor to the west that that's not how you treat your people. I mean, it was just wrong.
Absolutely. I received a statement from Mr. Peter Smith. He actually fell ill yesterday with a stomach issue, so he's not able to be here. Peter Smith of 16851 West Wilshire Boulevard, he made this statement. "I'd like to thank the city of Yukon for any assistance or help they can provide those of us caught in the forced annexation to the city of El Reno." Excuse me. "While we, at this time, would prefer not to be brought into any city limits, we would choose to remain a rural community. We do understand that growth is inevitable. For the betterment of our community long term, if we are in a progression that forces annexation, we prefer to choose a city government that has a track record of allowing people to have a voice, that has the city and the municipality management capability to provide infrastructure to take on additional communities. I believe that to be the city of Yukon. There is a very successful track record for your wonderful city. The city of El Reno has proven they will force themselves on a community regardless of the community's desires or best interests. The way that the city of El Reno has chosen to land-grab and force this on the community is very concerning. It is a scary thought that a government you did not have the ability to vote for can determine the constraints of your family land without you having any input or representation. I'm not Native American, but this feels a little like history repeating itself."
So I'd like to comment, I agree with your statement as well. Like Jeff, I watched the whole meeting from start to finish. Just my two cents, I think if municipalities could do that, we'd still be having land runs today. I think they overreached y'all. So I like El Reno. I spent a lot of time in El Reno. I love a lot of y'all's restaurants. I love your little lake. I love your little lake. Yeah, Reno's got some cool things going for itself as far as the city goes, and the people there are super friendly. But they overreached y'all, and I'm greatly sorry, so.
Any comments from members of the public?
I just have a question.
Please, please approach the podium, ma'am, state your name and your address and your question.
Cindy Johnson, 16301 Dome Drive, Yukon, Oklahoma. So you're saying basically, they already did what they did, and so y'all's hands are tied, and we're just stuck?
Yeah.
That's just my question.
Yeah, and this, literally, this is my first rodeo. It may seem kind of funny, but I've never annexed any land before, so this is my first rodeo. But I've thankfully been educated by our city attorney and our city manager, who, this is not their first rodeo. And the description from our city attorney that was very plain to me is, cities can annex unincorporated land, but there's no, there's no mechanism under state statute under which cities can annex existing incorporated land. So that is to say, until this annexation action is overturned, either by a court of law, by the City of El Reno realizing their misstep, we cannot take a positive action to annex that, that or any land in. Does that make sense?
Yeah, because I thought the letter that you read, I thought he, you know, that he said it very well. We didn't move to the country so we could be in somebody's town, but we wouldn't have chosen for, to go like it did. And then I found out that before my, I mean, I've been out here 20, I don't know, 25 or four years, but apparently before that, where we are was part of El Reno, and then they deannexed it.
Funny how that happens.
And now, and now they want it back. And then I was shocked at the meeting that they, because someone questioned why it was an emergency meeting, and they said because once they, it went public, what they were doing, then Yukon jumped out there and tried to do it real quick. Basically, whoever gets it first gets it.
Yeah.
And so I was shocked for them to tell us that was the emergency.
Yeah, I think whoever, whoever does it properly and gets the proper consent of the landowners can annex in. And I'll just speak personally, I do believe that it would likely be very natural for a small amount of land to our west along the I-40 and Route 66 corridor to become a part of Yukon, and for us to deliver services, police, fire, ambulance, sewer, water. These are services that are critical and we, and that we can provide.
Because aren't we already providing fire and police service?
There's a portion, yes.
So that's what I didn't understand. Also, what I didn't understand was how one person spoke for it, and the rest of you spoke against it, but yet they still voted yes.
Well, yeah, they, I mean, every single one, it was like, just wait for the people to quit.
Right.
So we can go ahead and vote, you know, but, okay, well, that's why, that's why we came here tonight, because we wanted to hear if, because that's what I was afraid of, is that they did their thing, and so now it's just up to a legal recourse, I guess.
Yeah, it's really unclear how that will play out. I know that there are several landowners that are represented, based on my knowledge of the situation. And I do think that unless, unless, I mean, the city council in El Reno could wake up tomorrow and say, gosh, we messed up, and they could just go into a meeting and undo the action. That's one option. Or they can undo part of their action, or they, or, or a court of law, or some other legal recourse could occur. So who knows?
Because we weren't even in the section that you all sent letters to.
Yes.
You know, apparently that section, somebody thinks something's getting ready to happen there, maybe, I don't know. And we're more up, you know, right?
As Mayor mentioned, we annexed property, attempted to, started the process, December?
That's right, yeah, by an act of the council. By an act of the council, not, not to, not to override the consent of the landowners, but just, just to begin the process, to notify landowners and to get their, essentially, their vote, their consent.
And it was during that city council meeting, some of your council was actually here present. So I'm sure that's what actually struck the emergency.
Right. They were waiting to see. Now, so is it in effect now, you're part of El Reno? Are they providing your fire and your police?
That's a question for Roger. I believe all of those ordinances that were enacted have been published, and so they would be effective, they were, all of them, except one, I believe, were passed with the emergency clause. So the ones that were passed with the emergency clause would be effective upon publication.
So as of that moment, they have to start providing you with fire and police? And my question is going to be, do they have the manpower? And are we still doing it?
We, we had a, we had a fire a little over a year ago, and Yukon came, Oklahoma City came, El Reno came, Richland came, and huh? Oh, Piedmont even came. And, but now I'm thinking, well, nobody else is going to come because it's El Reno's now.
We still respond to mutual aid requests. Chief could speak to that. We're very, very involved with our neighborhood.
Because that kind of worried me, because I was like, well, everybody came that day, but now our people, oh, well, no, that's El Reno.
The council members said that it would still continue to be mutual fire departments. They kind of skated over that and said that they have working agreements with all the different fire departments.
Mutual aid, it's the rural area, all the communities kind of help out and fill in up there.
Right.
I had a house fire here in the proper, and Chief can even attest, we had Bethany, we had Mustang, and it's even here in the proper. I think it's something a lot of the fire department actually does, to let the guys cool off and stuff, too.
I just know that Oklahoma City has a problem with, when you call for police, it takes forever for the police to get to Oklahoma City, and that's just south of 10th Street, right at Drakestone. And I just worry about El Reno police getting to you guys in time. I heard somebody at one of the meetings, I feel like I know y'all, because I watched you so long that night, said that, you know, the deputies, the sheriff department gets there real quick. But are they going to be able to come now, or will it have to be El Reno police that come to your aid? And I don't want you to suffer like our Oklahoma City friends just south of us do.
Yeah, okay. All right, well, thank you guys for listening.
Thank you, ma'am.
I have an unreasonable question.
Please, please approach the podium, sir.
Did she say you have an unreasonable?
Unusual question.
Oh, okay.
Dustin Rhodes, 4911 North Banner Road.
How would you guys react if the shoe was on the other foot, and you were El Reno, and we did get legal representation? Would you kind of drop it, you know, before it went to court? I'm just trying to think, like, if getting lawyers is the right thing to do, you know?
As mentioned with Pillmore, it's, for us, annexing the property wasn't y'all's permission to.
I think he's asking a hypothetical. He's asking, and he's asking the hypothetical, like, if given a legal challenge. I do think, like, at the end of the day, if we firmly believe that we were in the right, and we trust, we trust, we have great legal counsel with, with Attorney Reinhart, and with the experience of our city manager and our city staff. So typically, if we feel pretty strongly, like, you know, given a legal challenge, if we feel like we're in the right, but I don't think we would have ever taken the action that they took. It wasn't, it wasn't prudent, I don't think it was proper interpretation of state statute. I think it was a narrow, narrow and misguided reading, so it is what it is. Okay. That's my view, but.
Okay, thanks, yeah.
Yeah.
Does anybody happen to have that state statute handy?
Yeah.
The one about rural water?
Yeah, Ms. Say, could you please step to the podium and state your name and address?
Julia C., 605 Kingston Place, Yukon. Just wondering if somebody has that state statute that talks about how to properly and legally annex an area?
11 OS, Section 21-103 deals with annexation by the governing body, and it sets forth ways you can do it with the consent of at least a majority of the acres to be annexed, or you can do it without the consent of the majority of the acres if you propose the plan for extension of services. Again, that's 11 OS 21103.
Neither one of those things were done.
Yeah, it wasn't the process that they followed, obviously. They took a piece of that and acted on it. Any other comments from the public here about the, yes, ma'am?
I have a comment.
Please state your name and address.
Nikki Fanning, 16440 West Foreman. So you all did the exact same thing with Wilshire Boulevard. Every person that you all sent letters to as a city council was met with, we don't want this. You couldn't give them clear and concise who was going to be responsible for trash, who was going to be responsible for anything. And Oklahoma City couldn't either, when you annexed it to Oklahoma City. That happened on February 28th, 2022, is whenever the city council voted to make the recommendation to deannex Wilshire Boulevard from Richland Road to Sarah. And so far, all I've found is negative to the effect, the same thing that y'all are doing with, with El Reno. Every person that you all sent a letter to said, no, we don't want this.
In terms of deannexation or annexation?
Well, you all deannexed, but you all at the same time asked Oklahoma City to annex. You asked them to do that. When that came down, that Oklahoma City had followed through with that, there was a city council meeting here at the same time, and that was met with cheers. So how is it any different?
Do, how is deannexation different than annexation?
No, no. How is it different that you all can do that to your citizens, but you don't think it's right that, that El Reno can, can annex?
I do think that deannexation is different than annexation.
But you asked Oklahoma City to annex them without their consent.
I, I wasn't on the council.
No, we had Oklahoma City's consent, because it was an agreement.
I think she started, she started about the.
The homeowner's consent, that are Yukon residents.
Right, because we were getting you a new road, but we were still going to provide you services.
Well, not me personally, I don't.
I don't think we lost any citizens in that, did we?
Yeah, the property is still in Yukon.
It's the road.
It was in a collation for the road project. I believe we gave from center line to X amount of feet. I'd have to go back and check, if that's my recollection, too.
But that, I mean, you're still citizens.
We turned that over to Oklahoma City, so then they, they took the responsibility for repaving that.
You're still our citizens.
But we didn't lose any citizens.
I'm not, but.
In that, in that situation, we didn't lose any, and Oklahoma City didn't gain any. It was, it was literally just the road.
But still, the same thing applies.
Nobody wanted that.
Nobody wanted the road maintained? That's what it, that's what it focused on.
Oh, no. I'm sorry, he said it's been acting on.
I would encourage all, everybody that's against it to agree or do diligence and look into things I have a letter.
Hang on, we're getting you a mic.
There was a lady that spoke, and I should have spoken at El Reno. I didn't. I sat back and listened to everybody that was my neighbors. There was a lady that sat right in front of me. Her name is Kendra Hyatt. She spoke, she was on record, she was very disruptive throughout the entire meeting, was very rude to everybody, whether they were for it or against it. And she spoke out being against it. She doesn't live out here, she has no interest out here. She actually owns a business in Oklahoma City. She's not Richard Tootle's secretary as she was presented to be. And I, I would recommend you all dig in on some of this, of who put these people there to, to cause all this tension and division between all of us. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there any other comment on the annexation issue, discussion item only? Ms. Bates?
Mary Beth Bates, 3808 South Manning Road. I think I'm in a banner, but I might be in El Reno, and I might be in Yukon. I'm not really sure. I've heard you guys mention numerous times what happened at the City of El Reno. Let me be exact what happened. On January 2nd, at 8:00 AM, the City of El Reno held a special meeting, and they voted on annexation. That's a fact, that's true. I didn't believe it. I heard about it, and I emailed the El Reno mayor, I, I went down the list. I emailed all of them. They called me immediately, they confirmed that that was in fact what happened. They led me to believe that the reason for the emergency meeting was basically Oklahoma City, the big bad wolf coming out this way. I heard multiple things about industrial development, and Amazon, and CEA Page Airport. It was all hearsay, and it was all voted on in a fast, forced way. I was at the city council meeting. It began at 5:30 in the afternoon, and it was nothing like this council meeting. It was complete pandemonium. There were probably eight times the number of people there. Two people got arrested. It lasted from 5:30 to, it was actually 11:11 PM, when former state representative and pastor Dan Fisher finally spoke. That said, I have specific questions about the legality of annexation. You had mentioned that at one point in time, different property owners, such as the Williams, some other family farms, specifically asked to be annexed by the City of Yukon, and were they able to do that?
No, ma'am, they, they petitioned us essentially between, I'll say, Christmas and shortly after New Year's, about half a dozen petitions that would have been contiguous to us, and we would have, if, if those contiguous plots of land were still unincorporated, we would have considered that matter in this meeting, January 14th. So unfortunately, between the January 2nd, January 7th meeting of El Reno and declaring an emergency, they beat us to the punch. I think that that's going to come back to bite them at the end of the day. Like, you can't, you can't form a community out of people that you forced to join your community, it just doesn't work. So I don't, I don't think that they've, I don't know, I'm very comfortable playing the long game.
Do property owners have any rights as far as their sovereignty goes? You know, I've, I've lived in the same spot for 24 years. I live in Banner, it's a quiet, unincorporated country type of area, and I don't, I don't want to be forced annexed by anyone for any reason. Is there any type of legal way to take yourself out of an annexed area? What, what's the legality on that?
We talked earlier about the, the plan to deliver municipal services, if, but that's, that's a really long game, like, they have to, they have to deliver municipal services, or plan to deliver municipal services, and then deliver them in a 10-year time period. So I told Roger earlier today, we're all going to be a lot older, you know, 10 years from now. So that, that doesn't seem like a solution to me, but I think your earlier question, like, do property rights exist? I think in the state of Oklahoma, they absolutely do. I hope a court of proper jurisdiction, or our attorney general, or whatever, I hope that someone acts to protect property owners' interests in this matter.
Absolutely. In this matter, would you say that each individual property owner has to fight for themselves, or is that something that the city attorney would represent?
We don't have standing as a city to, to represent landowners. The landowners would need to seek their own legal counsel and their own legal advice in that matter. But I do think it's, while we don't have standing, we do, we are interested in this matter, because it affects some of our neighbors. It affects our neighbors that we go to church with, it affects our neighbors that we, that we see at community organizations, and that shop in Yukon, and, and are a part of our, they're already a part of our community, in some ways, more so than, than eating an onion burger in El Reno.
Or just an address.
Or an address, yeah. So we, we have an interest, but not, not legal standing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bates. At this time, seeing no additional comment, I will close this discussion item only. This time, we'll consider convening into executive session pursuant to Oklahoma statutes Title 25, Section 307b4, for confidential communications from the city attorney regarding potential litigation, taking appropriate action in open session. Do I hear a motion? Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Shriver.
Yes.
Hillmore.
Yes.
Selby.
Yes.
Wooten.
Yes.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
At this time, we'll consider reconvening from executive session. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Zimmerman.
Yes.
Wooten.
Yes.
Hillmore.
Yes.
Yes.
Shriver.
Yes. I would now like to read the minutes of the executive session. While executive session only, the items on the agenda were discussed, no action was taken and no votes were cast. At this time, we'll consider a motion for possible action related to potential litigation resulting from the executive session. I move to direct and authorize the city manager and the city attorney to prepare and submit all relevant legal briefs, including amici, curi and other appropriate filings to be reviewed and, and approved by all city council members before submission that are prudent. These filings shall be made to represent and safeguard the city of Yukon's interests and views regarding annexation, ensuring that all actions align with the city's values and legal principles, which prioritize collaboration, respect for property rights, sustainable growth, and the importance of mutual consent in community development. All, all actions by the city manager and city attorney will be optional and only taken when prudent and in interest of the city's goals. Do I hear a second?
Second.
So moved. Any discussion on that?
Sorry.
Seeing no more discussion, Mr. Clerk, could you please call the vote?
Selby.
Yes.
Hillmore.
Yes.
Shriver.
Yes.
Wooten.
Yes.
Zimmerman.
Yes.
Mr. Clerk, is there any new business?
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. At this time, we'll open up the floor for each councilperson to say a few words in closing. This item is reserved for announcements, recognitions, and is not intended for the conduct of city business by members of the public body. Councilmember Selby.
Yes, I want to thank everyone who showed up tonight. It was a good crowd, good conversation. Remember all the things we've heard tonight happened over many, many years, many city managers, many city councils. But Yukon will come out stronger.
Thank you. Councilmember Zimmerman.
Nothing tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Shriver.
Kudos to Mike and his crew over at NAFSA for doing us a real thorough job on the, on the audit. I think the audit was very detailed. I appreciate his diligence on that.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Wooten.
I'd like to thank everybody that came out. Also like to thank Mike from NAFSA for the report. There's a lot of things in Yukon's recent past that has been brought to light and it's, it was time for us to acknowledge those things. It's time for us to turn that corner, fix things and move on. And I think we're in great hands with you, Mr. Castro. And I look forward to seeing what you can get done for our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Wooten. A few upcoming special events in Yukon. Daddy Daughter Dance, Saturday, January 25th. There are multiple times. 1:00 to 2:30 PM is the Purple Rose Dance for sensory friendly for all ages. 3:00 to 4:30, Yellow Rose Dance, ages three to six. 5:00 to 6:30, I think I'm going to be there. Pink Rose Dance, ages six to nine. And 7:00 to 8:30, Red Rose Dance, I think I'm also going to be at that one, ages nine to 12. Location, Dale Robertson Center. Price, $10 in advance, $15 on the day of the event. The Chocolate Festival will be held on Saturday, February 1st. And who doesn't love chocolate? The time will be from 1:00 to 3:00 PM. Dale Robertson Center. The price in advance, $12 for a king size, $10 for fun size. Day of tickets, if available, will be $15 for king size, $12 for fun size. King size involves 10 tastes, fun size, seven tastes. I think I'm king size. Thank you so much, everybody who came out. I know it's a long meeting, the longest one we've had in my tenure. A lot of important matters covered, especially the forensic review and the annexation actions. Both of these, we look forward to moving forward and turning a page for the city. Thank you so much for your time. Thank you so much for your time. This meeting is adjourned.